Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting, August 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board Director Fortuna, would you please read our questions, save and hand in your call?
At Ridgefield Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in global community. And then, Alvin Roque, Margaret?
Here.
Danielle's absent with notice. Angela?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
That's also absent with notice. I am here. And Candace?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to amend the agenda to remove item 982, the presentation for District School Improvement Plan. We'll be postponing that to a later date. Can I get a motion for the approved agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And do I have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Next up, we are looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, let's move back to the agenda question. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, next up, we are back to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And Superintendent Wong?
Okay, in your personnel report, the task I had placed in front of you was your revised personnel report. Then we'll go into the official minutes. There was one that came in late on Friday. I'll do over the retirements and resignations. Jessica Bowman, Special Ed teacher, is retired as of last Friday. If you recall, she has a board hired her on June 26th. So she hasn't officially worked for our district, but she accepted and resigned over the summer. Catherine Drolschagin, ELA Theater teacher, another one that you had hired at the beginning and is unable to start with us. Michael Froelich, PM Custodian. Marie Christine Grand, Culinary Arts teacher. Kaitlyn Mandigan, second grade teacher. Denise Menzil, I apologize for uttering names. Cook. Laura Peback, Special Ed teacher. Tim Ricks, JV Softball Head Coach. Stephen Schuster, Assistant Coach for Boys Varsity Soccer. Jenny Wheatley, Childcare Aid. Lance Whitney, Assistant or Head Coach for Boys Varsity Soccer. New hires, Ryan Ballard, High School Math Teacher. Jeffrey Boroff, PM Custodian. Bobby Joe Kraft, Bus Driver. Mrs. Diallin, fourth grade Preschool Aid. Cynthia Fields, who's here tonight, Administrative Secretary, Superintendent. Lisa Faluka, eighth grade, excuse me, Girls Volleyball Coach, Head Coach. Jared Fortuna Gill, Assistant Coach, Varsity Boys Soccer. Elisa Haig, K-12 Student Advocate. Ricky Holdwick, Varsity Boys Head Coach for Tennis. Trish Honold, Goiki is her legal name, but Trish Honold, excuse me, High School Media Paraprofessional. Stacy Javonoski, I probably butchered that name, apology, third grade teacher. Marie Konwinski, Kindergarten Teacher. Amy Rio, Director of Student Support Services. Jordan Scopus, Freshman Volleyball Coach. And Caitlin Sins, ELA Theater Teacher for the Middle School and High School. Appointments, Brandy Kennedy. She's already been hired by the district, but she was appointed to be the three-year-old preschool aide. Ashley Gibson, again, already hired by the district, will be now the new K-5 team teacher. Nicole Hutchinson, one of our new hires, will now be the seventh grade Girl Volleyball Coach. Samantha McCarthy, three-year-old preschool aide, as well as childcare. And Ryan Williams, the head Varsity Boys Soccer Coach. There were no errors brought to my attention regarding the special meeting minutes from 6:26-23, or the 7:00 regular meeting on 6:26. And there were no questions regarding the claims and accounts for June and July. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Um, I have just one question. Who replaced Ms. Gibson for the kindergarten teacher?
Marie Konwinski, the kindergarten teacher. And the new hires? Mrs. Mandigan, there's interviews that are occurring this week.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. I'd like to welcome all those new hires to the district and those that have chosen to move on. I wish you all good luck. Thank you. Next up, I am looking for a motion for closed session. For 110322, a student discipline reinstatement. Pursuant to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and upon the request of the student's parent and/or guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline/reinstatement of a student whose identity is known as Student 110322-A. Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. We'll be going into closed session. We'll continue our meeting when we get back. Okay, we are back in open session at 7:24. I am now looking for a motion to amend the agenda and postpone Agenda Item 7 till the next meeting. Can I get a motion for that?
You're gonna need to ask not only make it a double motion, 7, and also to remove 13B and move that to the next meeting.
Okay, first, I am looking for a motion to remove Agenda Item 7?
No, you can do both at the same time. Just, yep. 13B.
13B.
I make a motion to table Item 7 on tonight's agenda. Move it to our meeting on August 28th, as well as to remove Item 13B, approval of Board Resolution for Student 110322-A until August 28th.
Thank you. Do I have support? Support. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our Blue Devil Raves, recognizing a valued employee and student. We will start down over here with Margaret Toto. She likes to start things there.
Just a little rave just tonight is officially Connor's first meeting as our Student Board Representative. And I love that he's got all his stuff organized and ready to go. So welcome, and we're excited to have you officially.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Connor. Candace, anything from you today?
Yes, I just wanted to put a rave out there to Ms. Ganguni for her super cute Facebook page post to the parents. Just getting all the parents ready and the students ready to come back to school. It was very warming and inviting and very cute and perfect, just perfect.
Thank you. Kelly, anything for you?
I want to give a shout out to the janitors. I only walked through the very beginning of the school, but it looks fantastic. So I feel like those are sometimes some of the unsung heroes that are working inside the school. So it really looks amazing. I'm excited for the back to school, what are we calling it? The welcome back? Yeah, the welcome back thing. So I'm excited to see the rest of the school and how it looks.
Great, thank you. And Sandy, anything for you today?
I just want to say abruptly that I was on the campus, I don't know, like a week or so ago, and I noticed all of the artwork flags that are up. And it's just, that's just really cool. I don't know whose idea that was, or, but to all of the students who did the artwork, whoever's idea that was, whoever put them up, I thought that was awesome. It was really cool to see.
To give credit where credit's due, that was Reed Shan, who approached me almost six months ago about coordinating doing that. So she will now be the high school art teacher.
And Brandy, it's gonna continue, right? You're gonna keep doing what you said, right?
We'll do another group this year, other students.
Yeah, very cool. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to give a rave to Ms. Shaq and her marching band program and all the support staff and the students. Coming back early and putting all that time in was amazing. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Wamsley and Ms. LaShawn. They were both able to come out and see the amazing performance that's done after a week of intense training. I'd also like to give a shout out to our football program. It's pretty amazing to see how those guys worked just about through all summer, training those kids and to see the kids that are taking their summers to keep training. And that leads me to, of course, Mr. Trend, who has been all over both those programs, helped coordinate through the summer and making sure that those programs are running flawless. So I'd like to thank those. Okay, anything else? All right, next up, we will be moving to our presentation portion. And we have an instructional spotlight, the 2023 Summer School and Athletics Camps. Please give us staples and Mr. Trend. Thank you.
So this was obviously my most favorite time of the year, this summer learning camp. Just being around all of the fun and excitement and all the students that want to learn. And we did an accelerated base model where it was preparing students for the next following year and all the great learning that took place. I'm going to invite up at this time some of our teachers that work our summer programs to also talk about the program. Come on up. We have with us Ms. Clausen, Ms. Gallagher, and Ms. Schley Huber. First, we're going to go into just a little bit of data because you all know me by now, but I just love data. Let's take a look at our student enrollment academic breakdown by grade. You can see our highest enrollment trend was in preschool. Next was first grade, kindergarten, third, second, so on. This is probably my favorite piece of data. This is our enrollment trend over the last three years. Looking at where KinderConnect first started to all the way where it is this past summer. This program has grown exponentially. Looking at our first grade fundamentals course to obviously the Blue This One. The STEM Literacy Camp was a brand-new camp back in 2021, and now it is our most popular camp. It integrates nonfiction texts along with science concepts. So they got to learn about aviation, they got to make their own airplanes, and they got to make their own water slides, and they got to read about these concepts and actually do things along with that. So it was really fantastic. You can see math mindset has grown, as well as middle school readers and writers. What's fantastic about this camp, another thing, this camp just started back in 2021 for the first time through the MISD. And Richmond decided that, you know, we don't really have a lot going on with our 4-5 folks. So we actually asked the ISD to help us make a 4-5 section from these concepts around genre studies so that our fourth and fifth grade band could also enjoy this camp. And sure enough, we're the first school district to do that and offer this for our 4-5 band. And it was such a popular class, we had to open up two sections. Here is our enrichment camp, data by subject. You can see creating clay creatures was a fan favorite, as well as arts and crafts. But we had just a plethora of offerings for students. They did get majority of their first choices. I'm going to give it up to Ms. Schley Huber, who is our summer supervisor for the program. She's gonna talk a little bit about our program and some of the fun stuff that happened this year.
So each day, we had a spirit day, which was a huge hit for all the kids. And it kind of brought in, and allowed the teachers to get creative in the classroom too. So you'll see like the Christmas tree. They came to school dressed Christmas in July theme. And the kids loved it every day. We had, the Fourth of July week was awesome. Thinking too, just to get a little personal stories, mine, three kids. I have one going into second grade, one going into fifth grade, and one going into seventh grade. And when I mentioned, I didn't call it summer school, I called it summer camp. But Amir mentioned when I said, okay, I'm gonna supervise summer school, that means guess what? You're coming with me. How long is it, mom? Show me on the calendar, even my little second grade, I like. So I circled the calendar last day. They loved it. I was just telling some of the teachers, my littlest one was coming home with this birdhouse he created in STEM. He had a trail, he's trying to trap, he's talking to you, all these, I don't even know what he was talking about. But I'm like, here, you know? And then my daughter wanted to, she did clay creatures and was in middle school readers and writers. She is still writing in her old journal. And then my oldest one, so I did have to bribe them, but they forgot all about it. And they want to do it again next year. And then we did have quite a few things, like just occurred, just supervising. I learned a lot. It was a great experience. But one moment for me, just being a part, some of those kids, they come to school, they love the breakfast and the lunch, but that's like their safe place. And so we did have a couple of things happen. But one moving thing for me was we had a student who there was an emergency that had come up, and she had to go to the hospital and leave in an ambulance. She came in the next morning off the bus, walks into the office, gives me a hug. And I'm startled, I couldn't believe she was there. Goes down to breakfast, I check in, how are you feeling? And I walk her down, she gets breakfast, and I'm walking back, and her mom is, oh my gosh. She was not supposed to get on the bus, she's supposed to be home resting. And I'm like, oh my gosh, let's go bear her. But she's stuck there. She wanted to be there. And it's just, in those just 14 days, I built so many incredible relationships. So I loved it, I'm excited, and it's just, it's great to be apart and bring so much fun to the kids in their world. And they don't even know it, but they are. So, yes, it was awesome.
We had lots of great little stories like that. We had our power grow out one of the days, and we were walking the kids out, and this one kid just started crying, but I don't want to leave. Why can't we just do summer camp in the door? I don't want to leave. We were like, well, we'll be back tomorrow. Registration event was a big hit. We had over 150 families attend that registration event. Thank you, Ms. Clausen, for snapping some pictures because it was so hectic. I was like, I can't get, I have to take a picture. Like, it was just nonstop. We had like little booths set up so people could come and check out what the camp, the enrichment camps could be about, kind of get a feel for what their child was gonna experience over the time, as well as some of the information about booth service and meeting their teacher ahead of time. And we did a co-operation with athletics, and I think that went over really, really well that night, too.
And Ms. Clausen?
So this was my first opportunity, or my first time doing summer camp at all. And I was kind of hesitant at first, like in years past, because I didn't know how the students would be because I'm thinking summer school, nobody really wants to do that. I was fortunate enough to do the program all day long, too. So I was there, like when they arrived for breakfast, and they were dressed in their spirit wear. They were so excited to see like what each other were wearing in their spirit wear. And then I was there as the day ended, too. For my readers and writers, I worked with a group of fourth graders going into fifth grade. And again, I formed relationships with the students. I saw the students form relationships with each other, too. They became friends with students that they typically probably wouldn't have, like befriended, like in a normal school day, too. One of my students that was in my readers and writers club in the morning, or my camp in the morning, actually cried the day before the last day because she didn't want it to end. So readers and writers, though, it was a way to make reading and writing exciting for the students, too. So we did a lot of non-traditional ways, like we did Scrabble outside, we used chalk circles. Like our theme this year was community. So it was great to have the students just like take ownership. They were able to present, like the poster boards that you see, like with the red circle, I guess it's kind of like a yellow circle and blue square out there in the corner of the heart. They were able to basically take what they learned and display it any way they wanted to. And I had, I think, every student but two that wanted to share, like the stand-up and share and everything like that, too. And then as far as the afternoon camp, too, I did Campfire Stories, which was amazing. It was like a lot of hand, sorry. You're fine. Okay, so for Campfire Stories, it was amazing because we actually were able to get a tent. And we put the tent inside the media center, just in case like critters came in at night and things like that. So we put it in the media center, and it was amazing because we had flashlights too that were purchased for the students, so we were able to do flashlight stories. Every day as the camp ended, too, we would do journal writing. The students could write about what they did like that day in camp, something they did at home or something that they wanted to do, too. We went on nature walks, we did like a lot of hands-on activities. We also built birdhouses. We actually made clouds out of marshmallows out of flour. We did chalk drawings in the parking lot. They had to bring in like one of their family, like favorite family photos, and we did like chalk drawings. And it was just like amazing. I mean, to be honest with you, like when the parents pick up the students, like we were there, you know, at the departure. And it was just great to have conversations with some of the parents, too, as they pick up the students. Because one little boy, too, we were gonna do marshmallow clouds the next day, his mom's like, is there anything I can donate? And it was just like, again, the students, I just couldn't believe the level of relationships that I built with the students in such a short time, where they built with each other. And like, they were excited, like they came running into breakfast. Like, it wasn't like you were calling anybody to try to get them to school. I mean, they really wanted to be part of the program. And then also, like I had four students at Rovino, it's just about how much they enjoyed it. So it just like touched my heart. Like, as long as it goes how it went this year with Ms. Staples and Ms. Schley Huber running it, and I'm all in, like, I kind of missed it when it was over. So I'm just saying, it was great. Like, I had a great experience, and like, I'm definitely gonna be back next year. So it was amazing, it was great.
And I'll send you the pictures if you want to see.
And what was so wonderful about the Campfire Stories, one that Ms. Gallagher is gonna go into with the Wild Robot STEM, I sent out proposal forms to teachers. If you have an idea for an enrichment camp, go ahead and submit your ideas. And those actually, those ideas, those camps came from teachers. So they actually proposed those courses. So all of that is teacher-driven. So we're gonna pass the one down to Ms. Gallagher to talk about STEM literacy while we're live.
Okay, first of all, STEM literacy, I was fortunate enough to have one of our teacher contacts, Kim Seans, was with us, you can see her from the picture. And the picture up there is squishy circuits. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but it's learning about electric circuits and things, and we use the Play-Doh with it, and they have to make sounds and make lights. And that was the thing that they begged me, squishy circuits, that was kind of a fun thing that we did with during STEM literacy. They, I lost my pen. Anyway, that was one, this is the second year that I've done STEM literacy. And just incorporating all the cool literature, all the books that go with all the things that we do. They do, they make roller coasters, they do a lot of things with books. They make birdhouses, just all of the activities, all hands-on. The kids just love it. It's fun. They, that was another student said something, oh, I ought to be able to do this, but I didn't really want to do it. But then once things got going, they were smiling and fun and coming every time, and now they're thinking about that anymore. So STEM literacy was great. And then the second was the idea for the Wild Robot. That was the one that came up for older students, is used for older students. And it goes on the book, The Wild Robot by Peter Brown. And it's this story about a ship full of robots that, in the future, that crashes. And then one robot makes it to an island, a deserted island. And the robot interacts with all of the animals, the animals talk and things on the island. And that robot learns to adapt, learns to make friends, learns to camouflage and all these things. And then as each chapter of the story goes, the students do an activity that goes along, goes along with what's happening in the book. They had one part, they had to camouflage their robot, because they learned that from one of the animals to protect itself. Here, most of these pictures were when they, this is what they had the most of, they had to make their own robot out of recycled materials. And I did have one student that kind of gave some parameters at first, but that he like begged me, begged me, begged me, kind of get bigger. And I was like, oh, all right, go ahead. And his robot was huge, except I have a really good one standing there back there. But, you know, it was just all about learning, and again, it was building relationships. And the kids had a blast. I got to, got to class a lot more this summer, which was kind of neat because you never get to really talk with teachers sometimes in other buildings. So that was a nice added bonus to it, too. So that was great fun. Schley Huber did a fantastic job, and, you know, Mom, we've gotten to talk to you.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. There's the giant tent. There's the tent. They had so much fun. And it was all set up in our media center, so even some kids that weren't in this class were like, wait, what's that class? I'm gonna go to that class. We actually had to share it one day with the other Reader/Writer Club because they saw the tent so often. So we let them see it for a while.
Well, more continued stories.
Just some good stuff about our camp, just some of the fun activities that we had. And I'm sure many of you saw them on our social media page, but the kids just having a blast. Once again, the theme, Sunglass Day, the different arts and crafts that they were doing. This was neat. This was the activity where they all got to make feelings of kindness. And you could see it stretches all the way down, ways that they could help the community be kind to one another. So, once again, just more activities, more of the hands-on learning. We got to see Cagan Strategies being used in the classrooms as well. So that was really great for their writing and their sharing and talking to kids about their writing pieces that they probably wouldn't have, you know, shared with before. Here are some staff and parent surveys. We did, our two biggest pieces of feedback from students were, where was the pool? And the second one was, where's my summer camp shirt? Because I'm gonna brag that I got to go. So those are the two things that I heard the most frequent. So I could probably pull one of those things off. You just want to take a moment to read some of those great comments. And everybody really raved about Ms. Schley Huber and the way you supervise the camp and everything. And all the teachers, we just all had a wonderful experience.
All right.
This is the second year that we had the All Girls STEM Camp, which is a lot of fun. And also, it's good for me because it helps me step outside my comfort zone, too, using the power triples and all those kinds of things. I'm not the world's best at that, but every time, like, I'm not afraid. So for All Girls this year, I'm a little smaller group, but we had lots of fun. We had two guest speakers that I'd like to thank. Corey Hassetter is a local community member. She is a civil engineer that came in and spoke to the students. She actually was part of building the Corey Howe Bridge, so that was really neat to share that with the students. She also came last year. Amelia Miller, former RHS grad who works for Michigan Primary Road, did a Zoom with us, did a really quiet interaction with the girls, they loved it. So we also learned how she, All Girls fully got hoop. That she, first thing when she went to MSU, she told the girls that she loved science and she was, wanted to be in the lab, until she had to clean a billion, she called it zillion carrots, because she, what they were doing, research for Gerbera. And she realized that's when she didn't want to work in a lab. She wasn't wanting to do that. She really wanted to work with people. So she told them that it's okay that you get into something, and then you may change your mind, the path may change. She's still in agriculture.
She's still in agriculture, but just she didn't want to be in the lab. That was just not her, not her thing. Some of the pictures you'll see there, girls make their own guitar out of little bits. Those are little electrical components to put together to make a guitar to make sound. You see they're using the power tools that Staples allowed for us to use. It was just, and that top of one is probably one of the most difficult things for them, that soldering. They're like to solder. And another one, the student said to me, yeah, my mom signed me up for this, and I really didn't want to come. I just felt like yesterday, I was coming, it's gonna be okay. And she was doing some things and it was her comment was funny. She said, I can't believe Richmond schools, this is kind of hard that we're doing this. So I said, you're fine. And then she did it. Then she turned around to that and I said, I did it all on my own, I soldered. I said, no, it's great. So it's a really good experience. It's all about building their confidence and just so that girls keep that interest in the sciences a lot through middle school and high school. So it was awesome.
Thank you. This is just one of, you know, we're one of the very poor schools in all of Macomb County to launch this program. So can't wait to see how it can continue and how we can grow it. Some more pictures from the camp. We had a community event where they got to, parents got to come in and see their inventions and what they've worked on. This year, our summer program had an opportunity for our teacher cadets to do an internship. And we have four amazing cadets. And actually, you know, on the personnel report tonight, you all approved our very first teacher cadet to a position here at Richmond Hathaway. Ms. McCarty is going to be our new childcare worker and she's an official employee now because of this teacher cadet program, this internship, and now she's hired here at Richmond Schools. So more great things to come. They got, they loved it. They had a great opportunity to earn some hours for their credential and to just learn more about the classroom. You know, it's, it's a lot of, it's not as, you know, it's a lot, you have a lot of freedom in summer school. So they got to work with small groups and they got to really build some of those relationships with students, so.
So this spring, Ms. Staples reached out to me about partnering the athletics and the academic camps together. And I think it went really, really well. I think this is something that we can continue to get to grow. This year, we hosted seven camps, two of which were new. One was new, was we had it before and then with COVID, it kind of went away. And this was the first year we got it back. But we hosted girls' basketball, which is new this year. Volleyball, wrestling, football, boys' basketball, soccer. And then Cheer brought their camp back this year. So it, we had 100, over 130 registrations through the Common Registration Link that I created. And a lot of those were from the first day that registration night. Coach Day did a great job of giving parents information, directing them where to go, directing them to email me when the QR code didn't work. But we got that squared away and then we, those registrations started flowing right in. And I just wanna, too, give some props to Ms. Staples and Ms. Schley Huber. Also, this added another level of coordination that needed to get done, making sure those kids are okay at lunch. Ms. Staples made sure that there was a table for athletics each week. They'd ask me for the list of kids and make sure those kids are at that table. And then they got walked over by a coach to either the high school or the stadium where their camp was at. And then making sure that those kids got back for their buses if they had to get on the bus, so. Just some pictures from, from camp. Boys' basketball, high-energy camp. I walked in there a couple of days and I was like, whoa, these kids are going. One of the funny stories from that is we had volleyball practice right before and a little bit of transition time. Kids are waiting with the coaches in the cafeteria and volleyball gets out and I'm putting the hoops down. And the kids love to shoot the basketballs at the hoop as it's coming down. Because they think it's so cool if they can make one when it's, when it's not all the way down. And then they, they immediately started jumping into drills while we were, or little activities while they were doing stuff. Cheer had, had great turnout. Soccer, they were able to divide it up into an older group and a younger group. These top two pictures are two of my favorites. I had no idea they were doing this for their shirts, but I walked in the one day while the girls' basketball camp was going. And I'm like, whoa, those are bright shirts. So they got all the girls' pink shirts that said Richmond Girls Basketball on it. And they had great numbers, which is, which is really good to see for our, our girls' program. And then the wrestling picture down there, those are not all of our kids. I'll say this about our coaches, they did a great job. When I put this out to them and said, hey, you know, we wanna partner with the academic camps. We wanna slide our camps into this after 12 o'clock time slot. We had a lot of coaches that were like, yep, no problem, we can adjust it. Wrestling, they just built a youth camp session into the schedule. So they had a couple of coaches that would take the younger kids for that 12 to 2 time slot, so. It made coordination with the, the academic camps really nice. And I talked with Ms. Staples afterwards, it's something that we really think can, can grow both programs. Those parents knowing, okay, my kid can come and they can do the academic in the morning and then go to their athletic camp and so on. So I thought it was a huge success. And I heard a lot of, talking to a couple of the kids, whether it be the, the high school kids that helped out or some of the, the kids that were going in and out of camp, it seemed like they had a blast, so.
Do we know, how many kids did the, the academic side and the athletic side? Like, do we have an idea of like how many were enrolled?
For academics, we had 221 students for the academics.
But what I'm asking, I guess, is how many of those students also did the athletic part? Do we know?
No, I have to, we'd have to pull that.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just curious, I was curious, you know, because I like the fact that they are able to do both. I was just wondering if anybody, you know, took, did that, I guess.
Last year was the first year that we did enrichment. We only had around 70% of students that chose to go to the academic, go to the enrichment. This year, we had 92% who went to the enrichment, which was, that was also coordinated because of the athletic camps that they had the opportunity to go there. So you saw that massive increase. So if you think about it, 92% of students enrolled chose to go on their own to the academic in the afternoon as well, to the enrichment.
And that's one of the, with a lot of these camps being year-over-year camps, one of the things we're really gonna look to get that information out to the parents is, hey, you can still come to this camp, but also check these academic camps out.
Right.
With the data Ms. Staples showed, those numbers going up, I think we're gonna have an increase in that overlap as well.
Yeah.
From 45 total students enrolled to 221 in academics.
In two years.
Yep.
And vice versa, you know, like somebody might meet somebody in the academic camp and talk to other friends and try something else. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, right, try to do an athletic thing or something.
And I, and I am a huge believer in, speaking of putting the athletics side, a huge believer in like, this stuff leads to, to good programs at the high school level. Like it all starts right down there. So the more kids we can get out, try different things and get around our coaches and our, and our athletes, it's, it's gonna help those programs.
Can you talk about possible tennis next year, maybe?
Possibly, yep.
I'd like to see that one.
Yes, so it's one we're working on, but it's got some coordination, too, with the city on that as well, so. I know you, you mentioned, I think in passing you mentioned that, so, yeah. Yep.
Well done.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our presentation for the 23, 24 student hair handbook.
So in your packet, you have a copy of the revised recommendations for changes. This has been a, it's a very long process that we go through. We start in the spring with the summary of notes, things that come up during the spring that aren't addressed or need clarification in the handbook. We sit with the administrative team after school gets out, hours and hours on end, to go page by page and really look at it to make sure we understand the, the language and what, what the intent is, as well as looking at some recommendations to streamline or become more clear for families. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Era to go over. So kind of just point out the pages of the changes. There's, there's nothing major, significant changes, there's some clarification on that.
Great. And the biggest chunk I do highlight, just to clarify, was like the formal discipline. That's only because it's being moved. So we moved it to an area where it's just gonna, it just made more sense. So obviously, the first page are just some of our new personnel, those kind of changes. Once this is approved, I will clean this up because I recognize page three is a blank page. But like I said, it'll all get cleaned up once it's approved. The next set of changes are on page nine. Just talking about their emergency forms are also available online through our Power School portal. So all that contact information, we're really trying to streamline families to use our, you know, our digital things. And then just, of course, the clause. And I, you know, sometimes you don't know you need to add something until things happen. So students can return 24 hours after being vomit or fever-free. So that needs to be added.
Can I just ask the, the parent portal, the student verification form? Do, do we give parents the ability, if anyone doesn't have the ability, to put every? Because we're, we're allowing them to put all their information online themselves, right? On that form? And then that's what we use? So do we allow our parents the ability to come in and do something?
Yes, so they can fill it out, sell with paper if they want to. We upload it. Or they can still have the physical emergency card. So sometimes they don't have, you know. But yeah, but we also open up our offices, they can come and fill it out online. Ms. Ogden is really great about opening that up to families, saying you really need to have, you know, this uploaded. But we manually upload it, they're unable to.
Thank you.
Emergency information show, oh, we're gonna do that, okay. Once again, just reiterating on page 11, that the contact information needs to be uploaded to Power School. Page 14, talking about scheduling after, after, so classes for students at Richmond High School are selected after a review of their educational development plan has been completed. That's part of what every student needs at the, starting in seventh grade, they all get an educational plan. Really concrete and Zello. So we just wanna make sure that that is being used before any kind of class changes are, are being, you know, made.
Ms. Staples, so with respect to that, after a review of their education plan has been completed. So the education plan, I would imagine, can change as we go along. So when, when does that, when does that happen? Like our, our kids are doing their classes, when is this review happening so we know it matched?
Starting in seventh grade is actually.
I mean, when they get to high school is what I'm talking about.
Second semester.
Okay.
Our counseling team, they go through and they meet with students and they're supposed to be updating their Zello accounts. And they have small groups that go in. And I see you nodding your head Zello. Were those any kind of adjustments to be made for the students', you know, educational development plan?
Mrs. Abel instituted this year, it's a paper to see if you're on track for graduation, if there's credits that you are short, especially for students that transfer in. So there's a, there's a paper copy that every year we evolve that exact same one. Okay, this is what you've done so far, this is what's your plan for next year. So she instituted this past year when we did the audit of all the, all the classes.
That's really kind of where my question was going.
Yeah.
So once they know what they need, then it leads to naturally, okay, now let's start selecting the courses.
So the student wants to drop a third year science class, no, you still need one to graduate, so.
I'm interested in hearing what you were gonna say about starting seventh grade, though. What were you gonna say about that?
Oh, starting in seventh grade, there are other educational development plans are housed in a platform called Zello. So it's just accessible, students are able to log in and do their own plan to help them, guide them so that they can help figure out careers in their field, what courses do I need, those kind of things. So it's kind of a career pathway platform that we all utilize.
Oh, okay.
We have some cleanup on page 15. The change needs to be made after the five-day building administrator or school counselor needs to initiate the process for them to be able to change their classes and obviously conversate with the parents as well. Once again, it's that course change, just making sure that our school counselor and our building administrators are involved in that before changes are made so that things aren't being missed such as a graduation course requirement. We have some changes on page 22 involving visitors and volunteers. We really wanna make sure that our visitors and our volunteers here have an educational purpose. If you are still, you know, wanting to help out with the class thirty or think that's still an educational purpose, maybe you're gonna do a read aloud for March reading month, that's wonderful. We want all of that here. Volunteers, we just need this in here, but volunteers must use appropriate staff restrooms just to make sure there's some clarification on that.
I, I think you may have, I don't know, maybe I, just get to page 16.
The FERPA?
Where I just felt, I just wrote out what the acronym FERPA is.
No, okay, no, I'm looking for where it says including commencement ceremonies, like all the fees and fines. Was that in there before? Or is that, we're adding that in there?
Looks like it needs added in.
This is a clarification because in, in, I believe it's policy, you don't walk to graduation unless everything's caught up. And so that's usually what we spend the last two weeks collecting any fines or anything that's late. So this is clarif, adding clarification that failure to pay the fines does not mean that you're gonna walk in commencement or participate in extracurricular activities.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you, I'm sorry. If you fail your paying means what?
We can't, we're not withholding your diploma, we're not withholding that. But we're withholding that, the, the actual ceremony.
Yeah, that you can't walk to the stage. And that's new language.
Yes.
It's new here, but it's not new in our practice.
In policy.
We've, we've done that for you here.
What would be an example of a fine or?
A student does a return his books. And there's $200 worth of books that have him have returned. Student keeps their laptop, there's $350.
The ceremony's a privilege.
I understand.
The right is you've earned the diploma.
Yeah, the ceremony, the privilege is because they did the work to get there. And I, I'm just, and I understand that we don't need outstanding fees like that. That's, you know, pretty, that's a lot. But I mean, I'm wondering, like, could we put an amount on there?
I agree.
Do you know what I mean? I just, I understand why we, why it's there. I'm just not sure I like it because I feel like, like if there's a $4 lunch fee left over or something, somebody can't walk. And I don't know, you know, like, I don't know what their family's financial situation is and I don't know if they should be stopped from walking in that particular. Or could it be a case-by-case thing?
Well, I can tell you, our practices, we give many donations throughout the year. Those are in an internal account that we use when we know of situations where there's hardships and we pay those off. That's been our practice for.
So something must have happened to add this.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's. The number of parents that call in May won't say, I need to walk in graduation. Because they've already ordered the cake. And I said, well, you've got fees to pay. You've got, you didn't, they, we have parents who, if you don't get the credits, we don't allow you to walk in graduation because you haven't earned the credit.
Okay, but then you haven't earned the credits.
Pardon?
Yes, and I agree, but then you haven't earned the credits. Like I, and I understand, like if you have an outstanding fee somewhere of, you know, a hundred bucks, 200 bucks, that's a lot of money. But I'm saying if you have, you know, if you can't find a book and you can't return it and it's $25, I don't know that you should not be able, then I understand that it's in the policy, it's just not in here. But I don't, I don't, I don't like it.
Do we have some kind of policy in effect to where we contact the students? They know, when are they updated? Like at the time that they may have a fee and it may.
It's in Power School, any fees that are listed in Power School, the student sees it right now.
Right there.
They see old food balances, the next one's a little different. They see if they, they lost a laptop and we're charging a student a laptop. At seventh grade, that fee stays there until they leave.
What about for when we go to, I guess, your senior year, we're auditing their classes, et cetera? Would that be something we could also include during?
That's what Mrs. Borwick does when we just start with the graduation, which is usually beginning of April, there's a letter that goes out to the families about end-of-the-year ceremonies and so forth. That's when all of this is pulled in.
And then those families would be updated, that you have an outstanding balance and that needs to be taken care of before.
Starting in April.
Mrs. Pacino, excuse me, Connor has a comment, he has a question.
Because on my, I have an app, Power School, on my phone. Usually if I owe like lunch money, if I'm in debt for lunch money, usually you get a notification for it and it'll alert you if you owe X amount of money. So I believe that they do it in mail, too.
Okay. Well, okay, in the letter, then, when they're starting to get ready for graduation.
In the letter, then, when they're starting to get ready for graduation, it says, okay, you have a balance of whatever it is, for whatever it is, to the parents. Is it also say, in some, somehow in the letter, does it say that, you know, if they have a problem or if they have, are going to have an issue with-
That's okay.
Being able to make that payment, like, to contact us ahead of time so that, you know, maybe we can work something out or, you know, so that they can walk? Could we add something?
I'd have to look at the letter, I don't know the letter off the top of my head. I can tell you this, the ones that have not walked have only not walked because of credits.
So it's never been, it's never been because of this?
In my nine years, there's never been anybody not walking because there's a fee.
But I don't think that's a bad, bad question to ask about putting that in the letter. Just because it's never happened doesn't mean it couldn't.
Right.
And it enables a family maybe to get something figured out.
Like, I mean, I just, like, like Connor said, he, he can see his balance and that's great. And he can be like, hey, mom or dad, I need this money. But what if there's a kid that doesn't want to do that because it's hard for the parents to take on that money?
So if it's never happened, why are we adding it?
Because you have to have it.
So it's aligned with, so it matches the policy.
I understand that.
We've never had it before, so.
I'm not saying, no, no, I'm not saying we have not had conversations with parents that said, okay, these 10 kids, you owe this much money that if it's not paid, you're not walking. I'm not saying that conversation's never happened. But when the, when the Wednesday or the Tuesday night before graduation, we've never stopped the child from graduating because of a fee.
I think, look, and I'm not trying to speak for Candace, but I think what she's saying is that she's, she is under, under the understanding that this is just now being added. This is being added to this because it's already in the policy.
Correct.
So she's being, it's being, so that they match.
Right.
So I, I get that, I understand that.
You're all sitting here and hoping it's made.
Okay. I would just suggest that we add some verbiage in the letter urging parents or guardians to contact us if they're going to have a problem.
A hardship.
Yeah, hardship, make, a financial hardship to make the payment necessary for their kid to be involved in the commencement ceremony.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy. I, I agree with this. Sometimes there's a disconnect between parent and child and the child shouldn't always have to pay the price for that, so.
On page 23, there is an addition of, we're omitting if no state and of course exam exists. We're saying that the, if students are wanting to test out of a class, a graduation required class, that they need to take the ingenuity final exam. If no ingenuity exam exists, then a Richmond High School final exam shall be used. This is for students that are going to test out of it before they even take the class. Lot of changes on page 24. We're just cleaning up our credit recovery options. So we did have to add credit recoveries available for students currently enrolled in Richmond Community Schools. And of course, this is credit towards required graduation, you know, classes. If they want to take another, you know, a fourth-year language, they, they're more than welcome to, but we're, we're not going to be. They can choose to take that on their own. It's not any courses required for graduation. On page 25, we're adding students may be excluded from a trip at the discretion of administration.
And you have to remember, when you're looking at this particular one, a field trip, you have to consider all field trips. So if we have a group that's going overseas to Spain, there may be reasons based on the history of the student that we would not allow that student to attend. To a kindergarten class going to Detroit Zoo, just the field trip's a job.
Likewise, you have teachers that are, field trips are part of the experience of that grade, right? It's, it's an equity issue. You, if you're in fifth grade, you get to go to Star Lab. That's part of your fifth-grade educational experience. So the discretion lies with the administrator, not necessarily sometimes the teacher, to say that these group of kids don't get to go. It's part of the experience of it unless the administration decides that, that they're not able to.
No, in that, in that circumstance, on what the administration, on having a discussion with the teacher, the teacher has more love, 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 personal relation, I would assume that they, you guys would take that into consideration.
Yeah, but you're, you're having a discussion with what the reasons are. Doesn't mean that the teacher can't initiate. Okay, I'm concerned with Brian going on this field trip, we're going to talk about what are the concerns.
So the teacher can initiate it.
Absolutely.
But that the final decision lies with the administrator. On page 26, retakes for grades nine and 12. We took out up to 50% of their sumative exams. Students should be able to retake exams. And also, we're adding where their original exam score is less than 80%, just so that we're not having students who are like, I have 92, I really want a 90. So like, okay, you have proficiency, we're, we're okay. But we omitted the up to 50% of their sumative exam. So if you have, teachers have four summative exams, you know, then they're only able to retake two.
Again, the concept, the concept here is we're working for mastery, for proficiency.
Right.
And we don't, we don't all learn at the same rate.
We have some verbiage being taken, I've just kind of like cleaned up as far about what a retake is. 80% of formative assessments must be turned in on before the original date. We had an error within complete and incomplete. And then we changed the retake within 1.5, this doesn't make sense in a school term, so just a solid two weeks of the original sum of exam.
This also, we honor the classes, we're saying the same policy.
Yeah, so it's, oh, yes.
All grading policy of it. So if a student doesn't understand something in October, they, they have the right to retake it to see if they mastered it in April. All right, so page 29, we just, we added in a selected to be counted for the high school credit on the dual enrollment pre-registration form. And that's along with our dual enrollment program. We added in on page 30, all the seventh period day and the credit adjustments and the, that exact verbiage and table from our course catalog so that there's just a nice streamline there. A change on 31, physical science and earth science aren't necessarily required courses according to the Michigan merit curriculum. They're just required to take a third-year science course. We are proudly, on page 34, we have taken out honor roll and we are going to be adding in with grade distinction. So you can see students are going to be able to earn magna cum laude, summa cum laude, and cum laude according to their GPA.
Is this in grade nine through 12?
On page 39, really just adding in the safety precaution, administration will establish lock-in and lock-out times for dances. Really, it's a safety concern, hey, your student never made it here to the dance, you're signed up to be in attendance, you know, we got to figure out, you know, what's going on. And being able to establish that communication with parents and guardians.
So then is that why we're crossing out, students will not be allowed to enter after one hour?
Mm-hmm. Because it's established.
It's going to say you're here by this time?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And the vice versa is you can't leave until this time.
Yep.
Just for safety. And I can tell you that Ms. Abel, Mrs. Borwick implemented this this year, sort of contacting parents for those kids that didn't show up to make sure they knew there were some parents thinking they're at the dance and they weren't at the dance.
So then students have to be to prom within an hour?
Dances. No, not necessarily an hour. So for example, they're, they're going to establish lock-in and lock-out time. So they're establishing, hey, you need to be here 30 minutes after the dance starts or maybe it's 30 minutes before the dance ends. They're going to establish them based on the dance. So homecoming, lock-in, lock-out might look different than there's no coming to their prom. But that will be communicated and to all students, like this, these are the times. And really, it's a safety issue so that we're in, you know, custody of the children.
And that was included in the letters this year, in that communication.
On page 40, we have some additions, talking about weekly eligibility checks for clubs and activities, just like athletics. Non-school sponsored organizations must utilize a facility use application, which is our internal measure for all the rooms being utilized and space. On page 41, we added tardy 10, which is a code to let teachers and administration know that students are here, but they're just, they're 10 or more minutes late to class without documentation.
One of the things that we found was we had hundreds of tardies that students lost credit because they were in class, but they were more than 10 minutes. So we want to distinguish, if they're in there, they're learning, but yes, there's an issue of getting them there on time that we need to deal with. So there was a lot of students that lost credit and they were in class the entire time. So we're cleaning that up so that we're not taking credit away, but we are addressing that there's a problem. We've got to figure out what, and there might be a consequence that, you know, after-school detention, there might be something for you to get that tardy 10 out, but you're still there in class, so.
Page 43, we're adding in a passing out course. So here, right now, our current policy, you've seen seven absences, you can still earn credit by passing the course or with a test-out exam of 75% or higher before it was just passing the course. We've taken up COVID-19 quarantine. We've added in health department guidelines. We added in, and if full support may be filed if there's damage or loss of school And you can see the changes here to the dress code. What we tried to do is try to really give general guidelines without, I mean-
Without worrying about that a kid has a pair of pajama pants on, what does that have to do with he or she being educated properly?
And we know the body shaming, I'm sorry, but a tenant seeing on certain body types is very different. And so trying to provide some equity specifically to our female population, along with these
That's exciting to see. I was, I'm ready to say that as well, but yes.
And when you look at it, it, it is basic. So I mean, there's nothing outlandish here. I mean, you come to school, but we're not saying you're in a uniform, we're not saying you have specific, but there is, when you look at it, even just what, you know, no threats, no pornographic, no hate affiliation, no hate speech.
Sure.
It's, it's common practice, being a good person.
And we added in our dress code values rather than here's a list of 100 things you need to comply with.
Part of the philosophical change on this one is we can sit there and put, you can't wear this, you can't wear this, and as soon as you put it in there, the kids are going to find something else that we're going to be unable, and we're always going to be chasing. So it's just looking at what the value should be about what school's all about and so forth.
So I guess, what, what happens when you've got some girls showing up in halter tops or midriff revealing tops and it's not outlined in here anymore?
It does specifically say the students', students', student dress may not intentionally show private parts. It also says here at the last of the omissions on 11, that any, that an administrator will make the final decision regarding a student's attire.
Oh, okay, I see.
The, the reality we have, let's put it on the table, you have a student that shows up first hour, under the old dress code, nothing's said. Goes to second hour, nothing's said. You have a student, third hour, teacher follows what the rules are, and now we're pulling them up third hour. We're trying to put the onus on the student to be dressing appropriately for school for the environment you're in. That's a conversation between the administration or counselor, depending on the sex and so forth and who it is, and that student, is that appropriate dress for school? And you're, and we're also walking a fine line of a value judgment of someone's values versus someone else's.
Just because I wear a pair of pajama pants doesn't mean I'm not a good kid.
Well, and I also worry now, there, there's nothing in here that says about length of shorts or tank tops or any of that. Am I correct to say that?
Right, because she, she spoke to that.
Well, I feel like then now it's just arbitrarily left up to, like, how come I'm in a tank top and I'm being dress coded, but she's in a tank top and she's not being, because it's just this teacher feeling.
That's literally what it is now, though, I think.
Yeah, of course it is.
It is, but at least there's, now, you know, you don't wear a tank top, everybody knows up front, you don't show this much of your leg or this much of your arm.
Is this the same amount, though, on different body types?
Yeah, but that's, and that's the thing. So a tank top should not be worn together altogether, so.
Or it's particular shaped.
I understand that.
It should be across the board. Yes, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't matter what shape or size you are. Now, I'm just, as a teacher, going to say, I don't like the way you're dressed today, I'm going to dress code you, rather than having a set of rules and standards that everybody is following. I feel like you need some arbitrariness. For the teachers to kind of keep track or, I mean, is that why we're making it so vague now? Is it just too hard to implement at this point?
You think this is vague?
A lot bigger than this, what's being crossed off and not used. I mean, I have no problem with tank tops and shorts, I feel there's no issue.
If you wear-
But I guess now I'm worried about our staff, maybe a parent coming in and saying that they're just targeting my daughter or whatever, because there's no clear defined rule that our teacher can stand behind.
But I think you're more talking about you're targeting my daughter when my daughter can go through half the school day and no one says anything, and then gets to fourth-hour teacher, now you're targeting my daughter because no one else is saying anything.
Well, that's because you first hour, second hour, and third hour drop the ball. Not the student.
Okay, you could say drop the ball, or you could say, what difference does it make whether the kid's wearing a hat or their hood, you know, how does, how is that prohibiting that kid from learning?
I agree with you.
Okay, so this, I, I disagree in the sense, I don't think this is not vague, I don't think this is vague.
Well, I agree with the hats and headwear.
I love the fact that we're pulling all of this stuff out. And we're, we're, we're saying, because I think I might be the only one left here, but Brian, the year, all the thing about hair color, when that was a big thing on kids wearing different colored hair. Remember that whole argument, all of that? Ridiculous. Students have the right to be safe, valued, and respected. If me coming to school with my baseball hat, whatever it is, and that's how I feel safe or feel good about myself, why can't, why can't I? My hoodie, put my hoodie up, I don't feel good today. And so I put my hoodie up and I spent all day in class, I'm learning. How is that, if we save, valued, and respected, I don't feel good today. We've all had days, right? Where you just wish you didn't have to go to work, but you did, right? So to me, I, I don't know.
I agree with what you're saying, and I, I don't think that Angela is necessarily disagreeing. I think that she's saying, on the flip side, you know what I mean, that if, if, she's buying with tank tops and shorts, she said, okay? So, yeah, that's what she said. But she's just thinks that this leaves it up to the teacher to decide if that tank, that particular tank top is okay or not. And that's what she doesn't like.
And then a parent or a student can say, well, why is my tank top not okay, but hers was, like, there's no-
I never thought about that.
Nothing that they can fall back on and say, well, that's just our rule, honey, it's nothing personal, this is just our rule and you have to hear it.
But if it's, but it's an argument that says something about-
It says like it's up to like- This says show private parts, but, but there's no distinction what is considered a private part.
Well, I think we all know what a private part is.
A stomach is your stomach.
Is a stomach a private part?
It says midriff revealing tops. It says midriff revealing tops, halter tops. This was mini skirts, underwear showing. I mean, these were specific things that were out, and all it says is show private parts.
But I think, again, don't we all know what a private part is?
Yeah, but I'm going to say right now that a girl walking in in a bathing suit top and trying to learn is going to be distracting to the classroom, correct? I mean, maybe not at an elementary level, but once we get into, you know-
I think that's the only thing, the classrooms, that's their problem.
Yeah, but I'm, I agree, I totally agree. It is that problem. But what if it's now a distraction to the teacher and it's left up to the teacher to decide that?
Just an attractive kid could be distracting, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I don't know.
I guess I'm just worried about what are our teachers, now we're just going to have every student could be, any student can be told something different, not all students going to be treated the same. That's what I worry about.
Based on this change?
Yes, because there's no clear outlined rules. It's just pretty much up to the teacher and administrators, case by case basis, right?
I do agree with.
Is that what we're going to, like a case study here?
But there are some things that there does need to be some outline. Keep in mind, we can always approve or change, and we can see how it goes throughout this year. Take some notes, and when we all meet again, we might want to be able to add or make some kind of adjustments.
Really good suggestion.
But I feel like the team came together and suggested this, and unless you want something altered right now before approval, what we can do is just take notes throughout the year and see if something needs to be adjusted as we all meet again.
By approving this until next, until next semester.
But just, but just think what she just said. The team came together and did this. This is the team in the building.
Who's the team? Is it the administration?
Every administrator, it was Mr. Trent, it was all.
Okay, right, right. So I'm just saying, they come together, they're working in the buildings. This is what they think is going to work. In my mind, I'm going to respect the fact this is what they think is going to work. Let's go with it. If there are issues, there are things that happen all the time in a school year, right? Where it has to come, we might have to look at something, and next year we could look at it, and they can come back and say, it didn't work. People don't know what private parts are, so we have to change things.
I would say not only did they come together, but we also pulled the data on what discipline records they've been looking at all year. What type of records are teachers logging in power so that they're sending students down to the office or that fall within this infraction, what, what discipline administrators issued for this infraction.
So I'm under this, I'm, nobody's going to be dress coded unless they're showing private parts, correct? That's, so everybody will be treated the same, if that's what's being said.
Or they have, or they have dresses that is pornographic.
Right, all of that, of course.
All of that, yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that some people, you know, for the most part, then everybody's allowed to dress how they feel comfortable, as long as you're not going to that degree.
And the line.
So no, no teacher should be like dress coding one student and not another.
An administrator will make the final decision, and what's important about that is the administrators are going to say, oh, you're being. It's really a conversation of, hey, how are you dressed today? You know, let's talk about this. Do you feel that, you know, just having the conversation with students? Because sometimes they don't, they don't know, instead of just being cited and removed out of the class. Like, now it's a conversation where maybe other things are going to be, you know.
All right, thank you. Any more questions on that?
You get to jump all the way to page fifty-three, and once again, this is only highlighted because it was moved.
To the correct spot.
Yes. Here, we made some changes on the top of page fifty-four about the first offense, being up to five days administration discretion. We added a step, step two, the second offense is up to ten school day suspension. So we added in a step so that there's a, oh, I was, okay.
If you recall, we had a committee that came together and we did this, and one of the things that we came, that it went from zero sixty, if you will, on that first offense, you were automatically gone ten days. There was no progression. So this was a strong one on the administrative. There were some situations that fell under this, that I'm suspending a student for ten days automatically. And when you look at the possession of marijuana, drugs, or other thing, and another student probably had a serious offense, got three days, a fight. So they, the, it was inequitable, and we realized living it for one year, that we needed to have an intermediate. That's where it was an up to five, up to ten. Third one comes to me, which is anything eleven or more, and then the fourth offense, we then come to the board rather than at the third offense. This was one of, as Renee said, lessons learned, notes taken, and things we needed to adjust.
On page fifty-five, if you want to be eligible to participate in afternoon or evening extracurricular activities, athletics, band choir, drama, we took out at least half a day in attendance, and we put in the whole day. We are a school first.
Unless you have almost a verified or documented, which is, which is a funeral, a doctor's appointment, those kinds of things, okay.
Which is listed in that section of the handbook.
So not just a parent saying that they had, I don't know, a mental health update.
No, there's a documented list of those reasons, yes.
I don't know.
I think it's as long as a parent calls in and excuses them, is that correct?
Oh, okay.
The attendance section is on page forty-one.
Page sixty, under damaging property, we added in and a police report will be filed.
Part of that aligns with the board policy that if a student has damaged property, it's our job, my job, to get restitution of what the damage is, and to do that, we need a police report with our insurance.
Is that only when a student damages school property, or is that when school property is found to be lost or stolen or damaged at all? Like, are we making a police report for all those things?
Like, we just got a restitution payment for the gentleman who chose to do, two years ago, spinning in the grass out here, former employee several years ago, chose to do some donuts in the grass. We just got a check from the court because he had almost restitution for our cost for fixing that. So I file a police report on any damage, any school damage, I file a police report because the first thing that we do is submit an insurance claim. Oftentimes, it's our deductible, I believe it's around five thousand dollars our deductible. So if it doesn't go over that, then we're on the hook for that cost to repair.
But not if the damage appears to be just wear and tear, I would say.
No, no, no.
No, if we're seeking restitution, it's created to have a police report on valid insurance. On page sixty-four, we added bullying intimidation of others by acts that are consistent and repetitive, because that actually aligns with the actual definition of bullying. On page sixty-seven, we added in, beginning the first day after the suspension, based on arrangements made with the building administrator. So if you're suspended at two o'clock, you know, it's unreasonable to ask seven teachers how all of your work, ready to go, that possibly like the next morning, right? It's, you know, six forty, so just being able to, you know, get some grace as far as when is, when that's going to be asked for. But still within a reasonable timeframe. And likewise with elementary and high school. Sixty-eight, students with excessive tardies will be subject to discipline at the discretion of the building administrator. Once again, not every student is the same. There might be, you know, a different reason why a student is tardy. Once you learn about those circumstances and things like that, it's different, so.
But what's going to be considered excessive?
In excessive tardies?
The quote number.
Anytime you have it, except like over ten, it's considered excessive. It's technically like ten percent of the school.
Okay.
Which is why we allow.
It's a measurement period the state uses for absences, chronic absences is ten percent. So like eighteen absences, nine, that's nine a semester approximately. So it's working to that number. That philosophy is what we follow, so we're consistent.
I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're still doing here.
Then if we're talking, what you've just said, there's circumstances, whatever, then don't we want this to say students with excessive tardies may be subject to discipline? Because if there's, if you're saying deep situation, right, we would want to say that instead?
I agree, thank you. Those are the proposed changes to the student parent handbook. So what would the discipline be, though, for that? Can you give me an example? I mean, would all the disciplines be the same?
Not necessarily. It could be at the elementary school, might be if you lost a recess or lunch recess. It might be after school detention, depending on the older kid. You're also looking at, do students have the ability to get home if it's an after school event? An after school, you know, discipline? Is there communication with the parent to give them notice that, hey, you need to come? We used to do a Saturday school years ago when I first got here. The challenge with that was finding someone to do it. And after school suspensions or detentions can be challenging, depending on the schedule of people and so forth.
Are they, do they still do like lunch detentions?
They have. It's not in our, you know, this year, we've been really focusing on, there's two, academic as well as our discipline and behavioral. We're trying to change behavior. So they've been looking at patterns and statistics, which is why the tardy ten. We found out kids were losing, they were in class, did all the work, but they were losing credit because they weren't, they were remarked absent. And once you have the seven absences you were, you're basically losing credit unless you got seventy-five percent.
And I mean, let's face it, usually the kids that need recess should not have it taken away because they're the ones that need it the most. So just trying to be more equitable with our discipline policies and what kids need.
I can tell you the conversation that I've been part of, I have been part of very many of them, but with the administrative team and some staff members, is about what's the reason the child not getting to class? You know, an easy example is if we're not using our time, maximizing our time with kids, there's reasons why kids do not want to come because they don't, school classes don't start until ten minutes later. There's no activity or something for them to be engaged in. So I got time, but you know.
And honestly, they're still children. They might need some time management strategies, right? So just kind of, you know, tapping into what they need, try to give them that support.
We've had kids who go to their locker, literally everywhere, and it's on the other side, so following the path. We've reassigned lockers, I know that's happened, to get students more centrally located in the path just because the management of their books and their materials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan will be putting this next week or next two meetings, please from now. So if anybody has any questions, please be sure to go to Lieutenant Walmsley. All right, next up, we have the student athlete code of conduct, Mr. Trent.
So mine is much shorter in terms of changes, and that's not, nothing misstabled. We actually took, you guys remember, we really dug into this thing last fall. And a lot of the clarification and some of the definitions and things that we revised in it last year came in handy. It was, it was great to have all of that outlined, especially with some of the things we went through last year. We really got to see how strong this handbook is when we were faced with some situations. I will say this, we took a lot of what we revised in this handbook, and some of those appeared in the student, the student handbook, because we wanted to make sure that what was said in one handbook was echoed in the other. So really, the only change you'll see in mine is on the eligibility sheet. There was some, there was one little bit of clarification I missed last fall, and it changed the word. It said current, I think, session or, I don't know the word it was, I just wrote quarter. So that they know your grade is based on your quarter, because I get, I got that question a ton. Well, my kid's passing for the semester, no, they're failing the quarter. And the quarter is what the weekly eligibility is done by. The semester is what your semester eligibility is determined by. So on that form, it clarifies it for the parents because it's echoed in section two of the handbook. And then there was one where it said his or, I believe it says his or her grade. I changed it to their. And that was simply to save a line of text so that I could put another row of lines there in case the kid was failing five classes. I could put all of those on there for them. But, yeah, that's it. So we did all the heavy lifting last year, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Trent? Thank you. Again, we'll be voting on this next two weeks from now, so make sure you get any questions because we'll bring them to Walmsley. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our presentation for club sport powerlifting, and Mr. Trent.
Yep, so I'm, I'm joined today by Megan Schultz. Megan is one of the students that brought the powerlifting idea to me. She's been, and I'll let her speak on this, she's been doing powerlifting on her own, and she'll kind of speak to her experience with it, but this club is coming to you. We'll go through the logistics Mr. Walmsley provided you with. But this came because I had Megan, and I also had some other groups of students that brought this interest to us. So I'll let Megan speak first to her experience with it.
So I started powerlifting like about two years ago, and it's really just changed my perspective on how like the gym was like. Like, I was always afraid to get out there, try new things, and then finally I saw a post on Facebook, and I started going to a gym at Be Fit, in Memphis, it's called Be Fit. And it was just like a one-on-one training to begin, and then she showed me what a competition was like, because she went to one. And then I started training for an actual competition, and it was a daily training. And I went to a USA powerlifting meet, and it really just changed my life. Like, I love powerlifting, and I have like a huge passion for it. Like, I now want to go to college for it. And I just want to take that to Richmond and like show, like bring it to Richmond and like show my passion to everyone at the school.
And have you done well with your powerlifting?
Yeah, so I've gone to two meets already, and at both of those, I've gone first place for my Asian weight category. And then at this last one, I actually qualified for nationals, which are out of the state, so I'm really excited for that.
How many schools have that?
So there's, there's a number of schools I know in the league. It's probably about half the schools offer a powerlifting program of some, some size. I know like Elmont's been one that's been big for a while, North Branch has been big for a while, Yale and Crosslex have been big. So a lot of the schools around us do have these types of programs.
This is for boys and girls?
Correct, yep. So yeah, like Megan said, it's a lifting sport. Students compete in three lifts, which is a bench, a squat, and a deadlift. And their goal is to lift as much weight as they can for their age and weight class. So the season runs pretty much the exact same as winter sports. Begins November sixth and wraps up with the state meet on Saturday, March ninth. Powerlifting is not an MHSAA sport. That's why you see the Michigan High School Powerlifting Association is the governing body for it. Pretty much every school in the state that does powerlifting is a member of that. They compete in that association. So it's similar to like the TRAP. So competitions begin in December, take place on Saturdays. So if this program were to go into effect, we would have a meeting in October for interested students and parents. And we would get practices laid out, look at events, whatnot. So we would have a coach. This coach would be a volunteer position from the district standpoint, similar to our TRAP coach and our equestrian coach. So the coach would be expected to possess the same qualifications as other athletic coaches, ability to supervise practices, organize, be organized, general first aid and CPR, et cetera. But in addition, they should have some background in weightlifting or other weight training certifications. So, because that's what they would be coaching. So they'd be, that coach would be responsible for scheduling and running practices. Even though it's not an MHSAA sport, we would still require the students to submit a physical and their paperwork, their emergency paperwork through EventLink. The competitions do have an entry fee per student, and the students and their parents would be responsible for that, similar to how TRAP has their fee for competing. The coach would have to submit those entries for SAT, for the competitions, supervising and coaching athletes there. They'd also have to organize some volunteer coaches for those competitions and collect their iChat forms for those people. We'll talk a little bit about that when we get to competition. Practices, they practice right after school, looking at scheduling the weight room and when the best availability would be. Some of, we met with some people that have some background and connections to other schools. schools and kind of bounced ideas about how their powerlifting programs run. Typically, they lift three days a week for about an hour. So we would schedule them three to four Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Team fee, when we would meet with the coach, they would figure out what that fee would be for those entries as well as their T-shirt for competitions. Team size, the first year, we don't really want to jump into the pool, the pool head first and end up with, with a huge number and place that on a first-time coach. So we, in talking with Mr. Walmsley, looking at for about 24 kids for that first team, that takes up about half of the weight room, and that's, in talking with, with the other people, it's about supervision-wise what one coach can do well in a weight room. We open the team to both boys and girls, and we would require that practice, being at practice and participation in practice would be mandatory for that week's competitions. You don't want a kid not lifting and then going into a competition, and similar to how you wouldn't want a kid to miss a bunch of practices and then jump into a game and not be in game shape. So how the competitions work, like we said earlier, they compete to achieve the highest total in each weight. They're divided into weight classes similar to wrestling. Typically, the girls' competitions occur in the morning, the boys are in the afternoon. So they have the registration and weigh-in in the beginning part, and then they get into their competition. The guidelines from the association say you've got to have one coach for every 10 students who are lifting, so that you have a coach there ready to go, or 10 students who are competing. So you have a coach that's ready, as each kid's lifting, they've got a coach by them. So that's where those volunteer coaches would come in, and they'd be, students would be required to sign up with the coach by Wednesday if they're going to compete in that Saturday's term, or competition. So in terms of interest, I've been approached again by Megan and by other groups of students at the middle school and the high school about this. Our plan for is to just roll it out to the high school, which in talking with Mr. Walmsley was similar to how TRAP was rolled out, just to the high school first, and then each year we can assess and reassess the interest levels and whatnot. So we had, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I would let you finish.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So when you say 24 kids, is that total, boys and girls combined?
Totally, yeah.
So they both compete at the same competitions, just at different times, does that work?
Correct.
Okay. And then, now, do we have, I would assume we do, but I'm just asking, do we have all the necessary like equipment already in the weight room?
Yes.
Do we need to get anything new?
So we have, this was a conversation Mr. Walmsley and I had as well, we have the equipment in the weight room, and our equipment's actually really well-suited for this. What we don't have, and this would be something we would look at long-term down the road, if we wanted to look to host a competition, we don't have the equipment to do that. We're not required to host competitions in order to compete as well. But it's something down the road we could look at to showcase our facilities.
So our costs, we're looking at, you're thinking that, because you said that the parents or the students would be paying the cost for the actual tournaments?
Yep.
Or whatever, is that what they're called, tournaments?
Competitions.
Competitions, okay, sorry. Is the uniforms, if we have them, and like, would that, would like they, I don't know, like knee braces, their back braces, or do they have to have their own?
That would be, that would be something they would cover on their own. And in talking with the people with the connections, the other, the programs, it's typically, typically of the powerlifting team, they get T-shirts for the kid, the kids get T-shirts, and that's their uniform. It's T-shirt, whatever kind of shorts they want to wear, whether it's a spandex practice shorts or basketball shorts or whatnots.
So our costs then are probably just the T-shirts?
Yep.
Or maybe it's the shorts, maybe?
Yeah.
And the cost of a coach?
Just, just clarify, when you say our cost?
The coaches are volunteers, are they all volunteers?
And the, the shirts wouldn't be our cost either?
When you say our cost, you're assuming district cost?
No.
This, this would be applied like we do for equestrian, like we did with TRAP.
Right.
They, whoever is running it is assuming the cost. So they're either doing a, we don't charge, pay to participate.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that.
This is, we don't charge them for TRAP, we don't charge them for equestrian. If this ever became an MHSAA, our, our kind of line in the sand is if MHSAs is sponsored or endorsed, that's kind of our line in the sand.
And so, and just, and all the coaches are volunteer?
Correct, yep.
Literally costing us nothing?
Yeah.
Yes, now if they started their own 501(c)(3) organization and they paid their coaches out, that's not us, we don't manage that.
Right.
But I guess.
No, we're, we're, we have the opportunity to get a bunch of kids to be able to do something, and it's not going to cost the district anything.
Utilize our new beautiful facilities, it'd be amazing to say that.
I, I have two questions.
Sure.
I'm assuming you have coach qualifications responsibilities. I'm assuming that you have one or two people that if this were approved, that are interested, ready to go, you do the, we would still do the iChat, all of that kind of stuff would need to be done, correct? I'm assuming, you know, in two weeks it comes to approve it, so if I'm approving it, do I know that we have, that you're ready to have somebody?
Yeah, we've got, we've got a couple.
And you don't have to say the names of the people, I'm just asking.
We've had a couple of people that have expressed interest in being the coach.
Okay. And then is there the same, and forgive me that if I don't know this, for TRAP when it's a club, is there eligibility requirements?
Yep, because we do, we do eligibility for TRAP.
Okay, I thought we did, but I didn't say for sure. Okay, so then that's, that's our responsibility.
Correct. The other thing, and I, forgive me, I didn't mention it here as well, is similar to TRAP, if a student wanted to play, say, basketball and powerlift, they would still have to complete the dual sport form.
And that's going to be?
And we would, we'd have to review it, make sure that their practices line up with each other. So if it's a, if it's a sport where, you know, practices completely overlap, it may not work, may not be feasible. And that's why with that, one of the things I, I have on my docket is to be a little more diligent about that, and really sitting down with the kids with those dual sport forms and say, okay, let's look at these schedules, is this going to work? And if it's one where their practices completely overlap, it may not, if it doesn't, if their practice doesn't start till five or six at night, then it, it would be feasible. I think it would do a great job of, for some of those later practices, giving those kids something to do in that.
Right, and I think, Megan, like, the kids, how many kids do you think that you have interested in? Obviously, you've been talking about it with kids.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you think?
Um, I don't remember exactly how many they were, like I had a whole list started, so like I had people like sign on if they were interested. I think there was like 25, like I'm, there was over 20, I know for sure, I don't know exactly.
Okay. And would you say that the, the majority of them or a good portion don't really do anything winter sports?
Yeah, so I tried to get out to like other students and like get known of that, like this was an interest, and I tried to go to people that didn't play winter sports, but I know a lot of the TRAP kids that do TRAP wanted the weight, and because they go to the gym, and I was like, well, would you be interested in this? And they were like, no.
Okay. Right, exactly. And so that's, I'm just looking at it as a chance for kids that don't do something in winter to be able to do something, so.
And, and similar to the, the hockey that I brought before the summer, it's, you know, finding what can we offer these, these students that may not have those interests in those other winter sports, so.
Good job. Megan, I don't have a question, but I want to tell you, you're so cool. Really exciting to me, when I was younger, I absolutely loved weightlifting and weightlifting, so I'm really proud of you for doing this and pursuing this and bringing it in. It's going to go good.
Thank you.
See, it went just fine. She did really good.
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for the board, just so you know, the process we went through is the exact same process we went through when we brought equestrian here, and we phased it from high school into elementary or middle school, and when TRAP was brought to us, we started with high school, then we entered, added the middle school, so the process has stayed the same.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Superintendent District and Legislative update for Lieutenant Walmsley.
Okay, if you've been driving around campus, you'll see that the last of the 2023 summer bond projects are completed. Punch List is what they're working on now, size of the road, bringing the dirt up to the road. There's some bollards that have to be installed yet and some fixing, but the punch list is they were out striping the parking lots today. They restriped the high school and the middle, or elementary parking lots, middle school got stripped. Also noticed in the bond, and it was put in the July, the June newsletter that went out in July, we're re, doing the parking pattern in the elementary to create a one-way flow for drop-offs, trying to alleviate some of the congestion. I know we're not going to alleviate, but at least create a flow in there, as well as the middle school in the drop-off to try to prevent parents or stop parents from dropping kids off in that three lane in front of the middle school, which is not safe for students. This week, there were teacher trainings that began today. If you recall back in June, Ms. Staples talked about teachers training teachers, PD, well, today was the first day. Over half the REA might correct, registered in some fashion to attend at least one of the event.
Two of our trainers are here today. They do the power school, school lifting and play hookup day, so some of our new teachers attend today, and Ron, who's in the else.
In addition to that, today, the building and department administrators and secretaries are now back, so parents have been contacting the offices, now they're actually going to get someone to call and answer the phones, they're back. Next week, August 21st is the target date to have all welcome back, packets being mailed home to students. That would be probably the most important piece of paper for elementary and middle schools, who their teacher is. And then high school, schedules will be issued at Blue Devil Night on the 29th, and then released on the 30th. Part of that is the counselor begins, our new counselor starts Wednesday of this week, and so we are just finishing up last minute schedule changes and amendments. There's a couple of conflicts in students' schedules that we're trying to correct and alleviate, so we have minimal disruption at the beginning of the year. August 28th, everybody at the table here is invited to our welcome back event. We'll be doing basically three, three main topics on that morning. We'll be doing a state of the district, an update on where we are at the district, both from academics, financial, and bond completion. Also be recognizing years of service, there's a program that we have presented, hopefully this becomes now our annual tradition. And then we have our keynote speaker, Jerry Brooks, and if you haven't seen Jerry Brooks on YouTube, get on YouTube and Google him. He's a principal out of Lexington, Kentucky, does a lot of educational videos, inspirational, good lap to have because a lot of what he talks about, we deal with in some fashion in some way, both in the classroom and in the, in the office. Tuesday, the 29th, we're doing something a little different this year. We are doing a community open house tied in with our Blue Devil Nights. Mailers went in the mail last week, they should have started a live lecture home if you didn't get it. On the one side, it talks about registering new students, on the other side, we're doing an open house back-to-school barbecue, the entire community is welcome. It's an opportunity for those that do not have kids in our district, or maybe their students have graduated already and they haven't seen the schools, to see the results of the last four years in the bond renovations. Several people who have come in and have been in the district for 10-plus years are truly amazed at seeing what very different schools they are. We've kind of taken it for granted now, having lived it for the last three or four years, but it's, it's great to see the expressions on the community members. It was a $38.7 million bond that was, did additions, renovations, and improvements. We were very strategic in our design of it, nobody could have predicted COVID, but we were on the front end of it, so a lot of the stuff came in under budget, below cost, so we were able to do more with the bond than expected, but all within the scope of what the voters approved. I have no legislative update and no county updates, I expect to receive a county school board association meetings will be coming up, I believe the first one is at the end of September, so as soon as I have that, I will forward it on to you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have items of interest from the board, sir, we're here, Board Member Fortuna?
I don't have anything today.
Thank you. Board Member Alden, really, Alden? Sorry. No, I don't have anything today. Board Member Cunningham, anything for you today?
Sure, yes. First of all, I want to thank Board Member Angela Pizito for her great work in the bowling fundraiser this past week. You did a great job for the choir and band, well, band event that you guys are planning, and it was a great time, thanks for the invite. The kids had a great time, it was a good fun family event, so I just wanted to say that. And then also, Richmond Middle School PTA has some exciting changes for this upcoming year, and we invite everyone to come visit and check out our Blue Devil table, our, our table at the Blue Devils Night. So I think that's it.
Board Member Tulto, anything for you?
I'm good. And I would just add, yes, I would like to thank Candace Cunningham and Sandy Fortuna for coming and showing some support to the fundraiser for the band and choir fundraiser for their field trip coming to Chicago coming up. So it was a fun time, a great turnout, thanks to everybody that showed up, they just both and had a good time, so thank you.
Next up is our public comment portion of the meeting. At this time, if you have a public comment, you may come up and state your name and write it down on the piece of paper up there, and also please check who you'd like to respond to, be the superintendent or the board president. At this time, you have three minutes to speak. It is not a question and answer portion, and where else did I want to say here? Board members may ask questions of the speakers, but are not required to answer questions or make statements in response to a public comment. Being that this is our first meeting of the fall, I also wanted to say there is this time limit, for three minutes, may be adjusted by the president or other presiding officer to facilitate public participation at board meetings. Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Scott Evans, I'm a high school baseball coach here. I'm just coming to echo the sentiments and maybe fill in some of the questions maybe some of you guys have about powerlifting. Eric, since 2012 and January and February, we opened the weight room for any kids that want to come in. As long as I've been here, I've been here in January and February, we've had about 20 to 40 kids. Probably about four years ago, we came to Mr. Ryan and asked him to start this program, and at that time, Dad Light Martin didn't want to go forward with it. I just cannot tell you the effect it'll have, not just on athletes, but we're going to get kids from all types that might come in and want to be part of it. Because we do have, the rack is a tremendous source for us in this town, and there's lots of men and women that have said that they want to come in and start training our kids, our young ladies, and our, and our young men. And that's great, and I hope you please consider it. We will fundraise all, all for it. We've said this before, that, that, you know, this town rallies around stuff, and I'm a spring sport guy that has to share players in trap and skeet and with, what's the other one? I got trap and skeet and, what's it, what's it? Trap and trap and skeet. So we share our kids and there's no problem with it. Whenever they have to miss, it's not a big deal, especially at an early age when kids are trying to figure out what they're really into, so I really like the idea. And I, and I think that we, and other schools do the same thing, kids wrestle and lift, kids do basketball and lift at other school districts. So I'm just here trying to echo the con, to speak for a lot of families that think that's a great idea. Personally, as a taxpayer, my son loves weightlifting, that's something that he's into, so I'm really, I really hope the board will consider it. Because there is a tremendous number of kids that don't play basketball, that don't wrestle, that show up in the weight room every January and February. So, and it's been like that since 2012. Last year, we had almost 40 kids in the weight room. So, I mean, and that goes every day, and for us, it was every day, Monday through Friday. Sure, that's quite passing my time, I just wanted to give you, give you where we're at, or what it's been like since I've been here since 2012. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have action item, approval of the 2023-24 substitute rates, Superintendent Walmsley.
In front of you, last year, we looked at rates, we adjusted them. In front of you is the recommendation for this year. There's a couple of things that I, I want to point out. One is in the back, you have a list of substitute rates. point out. One is in the back, you have a list of substitute rates from edgy staff. And there are literally hundreds and hundreds of lines of various districts and so forth. I am proposing that the COVID-19 building subs, which we will have for this year again, the daily sub, I am proposing raising $10 to $135, trying to be competitive with other districts. That ultimately is going to be our final cost of subs once COVID dollars are exhausted. And long-term subs, that is, and it kind of defines what a long-term sub is. This is typically for medical leaves, person, returning leaves, et cetera, for teachers. Those teachers do a little bit more than just the daily sub, have a little more responsibility. You'll see in here on the breakdown, hopefully we won't in, but administrator subs, we typically look at the experience level. It's a to-be-determined. It's usually a negotiated rate with the person that we're pulling in for new administrators. Building security monitor, which is our new subs this year, our new positions this year. We wouldn't be providing subs for them. Bus drivers, the sub rate is $20 per hour. You can see where our current employees' rates are. Childcare remains at $15 an hour, custodian $15 an hour, food assistant cooks $15 an hour. You can see the assistants step up to the cook when they're absent, so we backfill their positions. You can see on the other ones, GSRP, associate teacher, lead teacher subs. We don't typically provide subs for the network and computer technician. Lunch aids at $15, consistent with last year. Preschool, preschool teacher subs. The one thing I am proposing is that we consider putting out there secretarial subs. Sometimes the offices get a little hectic. We typically try in the past, if we know there's going to be multiple days that a secretary is going to be out, to try to put a sub. Sub pool is very thin, so it's not like there's a ton of people waiting to be a secretary sub. But I think it's a good beginning practice to move forward. It's a valued position that we want to associate in our, each of our buildings. We have one ELL para pro. We do not provide subs. Culinary, we would provide subs for, for the para pro, as well as the special education para pros. And because of the grant fund, we don't typically provide for Title I, 31A. So this would be my recommendation for you for the 23-24 school year.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions?
I am looking for a motion.
I'm willing to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the substitute rates for the 2023-21 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Any discussions? All votes in favor? Aye. Aye. Mostly passes. Being there is no other business, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:09 PM. Thank you.